Okay, thank you very much. If you wouldn't mind calling this meeting to order, Dean?
Sure, sorry about that. I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I can get fix that in a moment. I'd like to call the meeting to order at twelve oh five P M. This special meeting of the library board of trustees.
Thank you.
Will you take attendance?
Yes, Dean Serwin.
Here.
Bianca Richards.
Present.
F J Pratt.
Here.
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that. It's hard on Zoom to have the agenda. Directly in front of me, bear with me. Let me just pull it up here. Okay. Do you have any public comment?
There are no public comments.
Okay. So we're here to review the engagement results for the library strategic plan with the Barry Dunn consultants. So if we could take it away, Barry Dunn consultants.
Thank you so much for the introduction and for bringing the team together. Special thanks to Sean for all the technology and scheduling and everything that's been done to to help us get ready for today. So thank you so much. And we're really excited to review with you the engagement findings and and I'm Jason Gank. I am a practice lead at Barry Dunn for Parks Recreation Libraries. And I'm also your project manager for your plan. And with me today, and I know we don't have a lot of time, so I'll just mention them and if they have talking opportunities later, they'll go ahead and reintroduce themselves. But Monique is here with us today, Abdi, as well as J R Clanton, all with Barry Dunn. And all been working very hard on your behalf for your for your plan. So I'm understanding we have until we have till the top of the hour for the presentation. I want to make sure that we have time available for your questions. And so I'm going to go ahead and get started, please, right away. And I will go ahead and share my screen. And then if there's anything in particular, as far as things for clarification, or certainly anything like that, please feel free, folks, to stop me at any time. So today, we're here to talk about the five year strategic plan for your library. And specifically, we're here to review the engagement findings. Just as a reminder, I know everyone has seen this. I won't read it to you, but we do have a very specific plan purpose that was developed by the city and redefined in the RFP. And you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna go ahead and go full screen. So it'd be easier for everyone to see. There we go. Just a brief recap, because I know we're really here.
I don't mean to interrupt you, Jason, but the only thing I'm seeing is a Zoom screen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. How about Monique? J R, what are you seeing?
The screen.
It's so you're sharing the wrong window. It looks like you're sharing your web browser instead of the presentation.
Okay, hold on, because I'm showing let me close my web browser. Okay, let me try this again. Sorry about that, guys. I apologize. On my screen, it was showing the full screen. Let me try that again.
Yeah.
Then without, I'm not going to go to the full screen of the slides this time in case something happens. So I'll continue. So I do apologize. So this was back to the process and timeline recap. And just going through the process, we you know, we start at a very high level of looking at community wide perspectives of what's what are the needs in the community? Then looking at the strengths and challenges of South Pasadena, and then then determining what are the roles of of the library and helping meet those needs? You know, for the community. And a lot of that is done through our engagement and research and making sure the community voices are heard throughout the process. You've seen some of the environmental scan information before, but we do look at your metrics, your demographics, local, national trends. We've done quite a few one on one interviews with key stakeholders as well as staff. We've presented to a variety of groups. The social pinpoint has been the online tool that we use, which I'm going to talk more about here in a minute as far as the findings. And and that's where we hosted the survey, if you will, for your community. But we also had other onsite opportunities such as fillable information, handwritten information as far as visioning of your future. We have idea boards, so people can put sort of, if you will, sticky notes, if you will, about what they want to see in their future for the library. Kind of gives you a quick hit of some of some of the things that we did for our process. As far as an overview, whenever we interact with the community, we try to very much cast a broad net. So to get as many voices heard as possible, and we work directly with your staff and the project team to make sure we understand. Because every community is different. So we work hard to understand, you know, and finalize the engagement strategy before we before we launch. A just quick recap of, you know, met with staff, met with boards, community task force. Talk about strengths, challenges, visions, and value concepts. That open houses and as well as the as other digital platform, which we'll we'll talk a little bit more here in a minute. Gives you just a reminder of some of that kind of neat engagements and kudos to staff. Kudos to the library staff. They they, for instance, came up with this idea of a bookmark that would help promote the engagement for the plan in different languages. And that was dispersed throughout materials that were checked out and just some other highlights of some of the design work that was done to help with the engagements. Now, from there, I'm going to go directly into the results. So I won't read all these to you, but I will pause at each slide. The bottom indicates the number of responses. And I do want to I want to mention something really important. As Barry Dunn, we do planning work all over the nation. And I've actually never tracked over four hundred surveys completed through this process. So what that means is your staff, certainly this team, everyone that's on a call today has worked very hard to make sure the community was aware of what was going on. And for someone to take the amount of time to do, you know, a survey start to finish, which they did. It's 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 a commitment. And so for over four hundred people to do that, that's really outstanding. So I just wanted to point that out as I go through these slides. Here, we're asking about just understanding if if folks are a library card holder or not. Also getting an interest of understanding age groups. And we do this just to understand, are we getting diverse perspectives from ages as an example, and cardholders and those types of things. And this is a really good spread of overall age representation that participated in the survey. Education level, quick hit there. Again, this is the participants of the survey. How often are individuals visiting your library? And then we ask, we ask a number of questions and open ended questions such as, you know, if you're not using the library, well, why not? You know, we want to learn that to understand what are some of the barriers and obstacles. And so what what you're seeing here are the most commonly mentioned reasons why people are not using the library here on the left. On the right, on these quotes, I'm going to minimize that so we could see that better. On these quotes, these are verbatim. So simply copy paste from survey respondents, not even proofed for grammar or anything like that. Taken verbatim from store from the survey. You're going to see a couple more slides like that. So I just want to put into context what this is. This is again, on these bullets, these are the things that are mentioned in the most as far as common themes of why people aren't using your library and some quotes that we pulled out to help tell the story. How about your reasons for visiting the library? And here you'll see the selection of books and other materials, as well as being close to home proximity is important. Staff, staff is mentioned many, many times as being a great reason why your patrons are visiting your library, as well as programs and events that are highly enjoyable. How about other reasons? Same format. The items here in the left are the ones that are mentioned most specifically frequently. And the quotes on the right are some quotes we pulled out. I'll I'll let you read that for a few seconds and I move on. And then what do you usually do? You know, what do you usually do when 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 you visit our library? That's important to understand. You know, how we're meeting needs and what's popular and of interest to all of our patrons. And then we have browsing for books and materials and checking out books and materials, picking up holds. So your library definitely is a great resource with your collection and materials. There's no question. The use and the passion for for what the materials you have is definitely a top, top need of your library. How about other things when you visit the library? And this could be anything. And here are a list of items that were the most commonly mentioned for other reasons you visit the library. We asked barriers. We think that learning about barriers is really important. Because we want to find out if there's things that we can do to help people have better access to their library, what we want to know about it. And so not surprising, because this is fairly common in a lot of the survey work that we do. It comes down to personal time. Do people have the time to visit the library or not? But beyond that, it's things like parking. It's not enough hours. It is safety concerns, a lack of interest. And the distance to the library are some of the, meaning their distance to the library are some of the reasons. How about some other barriers? Covid nineteen pandemic was mentioned throughout the survey. So there's different comfort levels, different understandings, different approaches to how individuals are are working through covid and definitely was mentioned many times. And here you're seeing some other 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 barriers to services. And to no surprise, also, I will say a lack of hours or not enough hours, that's pretty much in almost all the survey work that we do. Of course, people would love to have, you know, the library open pretty much twenty four seven, right? So that's that's also not a surprise. We asked how often people use a website. And that's important because how we're getting out information, whether people are looking at digital access, those types of things. And and you're seeing, you know, quite a few number of people that participate in the survey are using it several times a year to several times a month, even once a month or once a week. We wanted to ask people what they do when they visit the website. And searching for books is definitely one of the main reasons, but also finding out information about hours and services that are offered and digital resources are some of the top reasons why people are visiting your website. And how about some of the other reasons? And that really comes down to citywide information, library board, meeting notes, and volunteering. By the way, another strong theme throughout your engagement was the passion and the appreciation that people have with their ability to volunteer at your library. They really appreciate that. We want to know, did people use library services when the building was closed due to covid? And the answer is the majority yes. Which is really interesting, because you know, it was certainly when the buildings closed, how our services change? How are people getting their needs that? And so we asked how were they, you know, what are the ways that that they use the library when it was closed and the library takeout service being very popular? And then, of course, ebooks and e audiobooks also followed by the virtual library programs and streaming films as a reason, ways people using the library when it's closed. The other ways that people use the library when it was closed, outdoor story time, take home activities, content related to research and Zoom lessons for preschool classes. What would you like to see in the future? And as you can see, there is quite a bit of voices here as to they want to see a lot. Your community wants to see a lot. Certainly, one of the more popular areas is the outdoor programming and seating area to be more formalized, if you will. I will tell you that's certainly a trend and very common feedback we're seeing across the nation, whether it's libraries or or any type of local government service. People are wanting to have options outside as well. Comfortable seating areas as far as furnishing in inside and outside the library. Rooms of various sizes, so they can be used in different ways, flexible spaces, more parking, better space for teens, better space for children's story time. I won't read them all, but those are some of the key highlights of what people want to see in the future for their library. Other services, amenities or technologies you would like to see in the library future. And here again, no surprise, more hours and outdoor spaces, very similar to some of the areas I was just mentioning, as well as some quotes. And I'll leave this here for a second, then I'll then I'll move on. Additional services, you know, people had a lot to say when they wrote in comments. And so here are some other things they had in mind about the future. We asked, what are the most important ways the library can be an asset in your community? And it providing materials for leisure reading and entertainment is certainly one of the strongest reasons, followed by promoting the value of lifelong learning. By it helps prepare children for school, convenient place to work or study and a series of other reasons. And I think that this is certainly noteworthy, because it's 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 an important to understand the place of the library in a community, because it actually does vary from community to community. But it also helps inform staff as to maybe where they should be. You know, focusing on, if you will, for the next years of the strategic plan timeframe. How do you find out about our services? Of course, we want to know about that to see how we're doing as a library and connecting with our constituents. And in fact, the library website is a top reason, followed by word of mouth. Flyers and a printed calendar and social media, also other popular reasons people are finding out about services at your library. Regardless of the extent that you use or do not use a library, do you think having a public library is a benefit to the community? Probably not a surprise if you're participating in a library survey, that you think the public library is a benefit for your community. But there is, there is, you know, a little small fraction there of a no, but primarily, yes, by 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 far, people believe that there's a benefit of having a public library for the community. This was interesting. It's a wordle, so meaning the larger the word or the bolder the word and how it lays out here, the more frequently it was mentioned. You know, take this sort of the grain of salt, but nonetheless, when we ask people what they like about their library, some of the words immediately come to mind are the staff, the books, friendly environment, great library, children's areas. Those are the kind of buzzwords, if you will, that your community members themselves are saying about your library. What do you like about the library? So we wanted to know what people really thought were some of the highest ratings, if you will. And you'll see here, friendly staff, the reason why there's a plus plus, anytime there's a plus added to a comment, that means it was mentioned significantly amount of times. So not, these are common themes, but when there's pluses added, we did that to say that, wow, that was mentioned a lot. So friendly staff sense of place, the location, those types of things, as well as these quotes come to mind about what people like about your library. And then what you'd like to see improved about the library. And of course, books is mentioned again, because people really enjoy your collection. They want to see more. They want to see more children's areas and seating. And you know, better selection of materials and those types of things come to mind. And then we did also ask them if they had other things to add. Please tell us what you'd like to see improved about the library. You're seeing, I think, hopefully by now, you're seeing a lot of consistent themes. You're seeing things like updated facility, and you're seeing again more hours. Improvement on safety, parking is a regular reoccurring input, teen and children's area as well. And people talk about a facelift modernizing some areas as an example, and it continues on the next slide, because people have a lot of ideas. More ebooks, your digital collection, people would like to see to be grown. Here again, seats and spaces and outdoor spaces are very popular. And then a quote here as well. And of course, there's still a little bit more to be improved throughout the library, because there's so much passion and so many ideas that people have. And here, a common mention was less homeless, or people perceived to be experiencing homelessness was was mentioned quite frequently. And as well as some additional quotes here on the right. We also asked, what services do you seek at other libraries? Because you know, why do people use other libraries? And by the way, you know, California is great in that regard by the shared resources. And I think that that's really fantastic for individuals to be able to go to whatever library they'd like for their needs. But here are the most common reasons. People may not be going to your library, may be going somewhere else in the in the in the region. And just a few more slides, and then we're going to go back and have discussion and open questions. And we're really looking forward to that. One more slide on other services people seek at other libraries. And then the last few slides, what we did here is that we went through and looked at the themes. So additional themes of the community strength. So when people talked about the community as a whole, so I want to be specific here, this slide is representing of the people that participated, any type of the engagements that we did. These are the common themes that they mentioned that they really thought these were strengths in South Pasadena as a whole, not just the library. And I would just mention, you have an absolutely beautiful community, and I want to live there someday. It's just a great community. I really, it's 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 remarkable. We also asked here again, to be clear, this is not the library challenges. This is community as a whole. Don't people talk about your challenges? And here you go. And we asked very specifically about then library challenges. What are some challenges? Now, this is a slide specifically to tell you about the public library. You're taking up on some things we talked about. And then we also wanted to give, we did a number of one on one stakeholder input. We worked closely with library team leadership to help us connect with some diverse and, you know, one on one opportunities. And here are some things that your stakeholders said. Things like programs, things for youth, of course, in interesting, more bathrooms is mentioned in pretty much every engagement that we did or updated bathroom. Yeah, it's it's a great resource for the community, for sure. And then we also had an opportunity to review written input. So people had the opportunity anyway. It's not everyone's expressing in a particular way. So we also wanted handwritten notes. And here are some of the most common things that were mentioned about your library. So then what we did to help out the team is we worked very hard as a consultant team to go through every single bit of comment that was made throughout the process. And we thought very carefully about what were the most common themes mentioned with everything that was mentioned on a whole grand scale of all the various engagement that we did. And what we came up with is addressing facility needs is a tier one. We use tier one because we're calling this tier one of the most frequent, the most common mentioned items fall into either addressing facility needs, prioritizing safety and expanding programs, events and hours. So this is of everything that was mentioned. These are the three areas that were most frequently mentioned. Also mentioned fairly frequent, we're calling tier two is increasing your technology opportunities, growing the collection and being mindful and adaptive to covid nineteen impacts. And one more that is also noteworthy, because there was still a fair amount of the next input we call your three. Your location, you know, many library systems that we work with are considering, you know, all these other locations. And where else do we move the library? And and there is just so much passion in your community about your beautiful library, your grounds from like a park light setting are the best I've seen. And the the beauty of your of your building is just just paramount. It doesn't surprise me. And then also being, you know, being proactive about the barriers that exist and looking to address those barriers for 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 more usage in your library. So we are halfway through our time, and that concludes the question.
How do we stack? I mean, I'm guessing that most of what we just saw, if you look at fifty libraries, would be, what did they say? Are we? That's one question. And yes, we do work with libraries and we have other involved in certain others in the room that are involved in leading libraries for decades. And so my first response is I would say similar, the similar things that are coming up in other libraries are things like we heard in your community. One being, one being more hours. Everyone loves their library, wants more hours, more offers. The other one, though, really is on the outdoor side. There's been shifts since covid started that more and more people want to have the option of doing things outdoors. It just so happens, you have an absolute stunning park like setting. Many libraries don't have that. That's different. You have a unique characteristic about your grounds at your library. Yeah, many, many libraries are really wanting to have what you have as far as your grounds. That's received in many different ways, but yeah, that's a very common occurrence of information we're hearing as far as people feeling safe in their place, no matter where they are, whether at the library or the store or city hall or the school. People just want to feel safe because then they feel welcome. So after we hear things like security cameras and the police officers or addressing sightline, you know, we've been doing more and more work about crime prevention and environmental design, looking at how we can do improvement in environment. I would say, and then specifically, when people are asking for more of collections. Yeah, I'm gonna do Monique, they are. I would ask, you know, Monique serves as leader in running library systems in California. I asked my eartrays there as well and see how the question was, you know, in a comparable way, what do you think?
Yeah, I would say that more than I've seen in other assessments, the respondents were very aware and appreciative of your collection. Not a lot of libraries have that. So I would say that's a that is a strong point for for you all to capitalize on. You know, for a long time, libraries were kind of shying away from our brand's books, right? And people are very focused on technology, we're very focused on, you know, equity access to the internet and things like that. And those are all very good things. But the fact that you have a collection that almost everyone remark on is really kind of outside of the trends. But I'd say, you know, you're you're in a similar place, just like Jason said, for a lot of activities, programs, things like that. And certainly, facility, you know, the facility was another aspect. So it's a really strong piece for all of you. And then people are very aware of information you have space. There's definitely a lot of the location. And you know, just like I said, that's you have a lot of strong support that may be going forward, you can have a facility changes and improvements, you might want to, you might want to. Yes, yes, I am. And I also, you know, know that there is, there are other libraries in California who are looking to work the legislation to find another bond act. And so you only want to be prime and proactive in that respect as well. Yeah, you know, I got some comments to see up here. I went through on, recently received all the public comments. And I just, I noticed that the public comments really did along with the themes. So that that, that consistency, I was thinking, kind of, you know, use the themes when we pull, what's coming on. So I just wanted to say, you guys took a lot of comments, represented and had those themes. You know, maybe I say something along that. I agree with you. The other thing I wanted you to know, be aware of, that the staff was very aware of the community needs and what the themes might be, even before we got the results. So what the staff was telling us, our data was really confirmed by what the community commented on. So, you know, in that respect, I'm very aware and just, you know, responsive staff organization, not a real surface show.
We're just by that. We have some very long term staff, just excellent and very engaged with the community. So I'm pleased to hear that their initial insight was as much as I was.
Yeah. That kind of shows that we really do need to listen to staff for your day in and day out. I mean, you have a lot of work, you know, we're here, but we're not here day in and day out. So just put that higher level of, you know, confidence and trust with the staff, they're heading in the right direction. And that makes me feel, I'm like, I'm very happy with that.
One of the, this is a question I have is that even managers, so people that are not using your library, whether we, this is a one on one meetings or if they do the survey, you must, must have something to be told to, and this is exactly what you're doing, you're a market job. But even if you're maybe she is not knowing as much about the library, actually some responses about what it seems. And so I think that's, I have a very positive because you want to sharpen your focus. What are you going to be your next ideas? That'll let go there from consistency of the themes that I think we're hearing. No, I was just, I was really impressed by the work that Jason screwed it. And just for, seeing it in some representation, the, the love and support that my community is just, is undeniable. And I never, now being a part of it, I'm seeing it from center. So it's very encouraging. And I I know the staff was championing, so I just felt this was. And so I know for you. So my question to you basically is, so what's next? Based on those parts, another great, I guess my question is, what is the whole, the, the recognition that, that's a, and talk about, we need to, we have to, that's a whole happen. So we are doing, I'm just posting a great, this is a whole video. That's just information, maybe better visual, right here, we're going to use, we're going to share the names there.